The following was recorded in front of a live studio audience at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. This is the United Podcast Network.
The following program is closed captioned for the thinking impaired.
By tomorrow, I will rule the world!
You think he's gone? He's not gone! That's the whole point! He's never gone!
Is this some radical new therapy?
You see?
Hey, my daddy!
Alrighty. We'll have to get the video back for the next debate. Hi, I'm Tom Duggan here at the Paying Attention Podcast, Hyatt Up Two Guys Smoke Shop here in Salem, New Hampshire, at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. And we are very delighted tonight to be able to bring you guys a debate between the city council candidates for the central district city council in Methuen. We did ask Jim McCarty to be here because of where we are, he's not physically capable of being here. We also offered him the opportunity to debate via Skype. You not want to take that opportunity? So, he is in the race, but these are your three that showed up. These are the three that are debating today. We have from your right to left, right? From your right to stage left. Stage right is Joyce Campanion, she's a city councillor and she's been an elected official for what is it? 113 years now, is it Joyce?
Hundred fourteen.
I'm saying, I say it out of love. To, 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 in the middle is Joe Ferretta, a first time candidate for office. And sitting to my left or to your right is DJ Deeb, was a member of the Methuen City Council. He also served on the Drakehead School Committee and the Great Alliance Technical School Committee.
Great Allo.
I'm sorry, Great Lowell Technical School Committee. They're all running for the district C city council race. The, the, each city council district elects two candidates. So, two of the four people on the ballot will win. I want to thank our sponsors. Boy, I'll tell you, I love our sponsors. They are great. And if it wasn't for them, because we have to buy the time and we have to pay for Ed, who's like, it was like a million dollars an hour for Ed, who's a fine, fine producer. Butter Bings on Hampshire Street. I was having lunch with Joel, I think, last week and he said, you've got absolutely... I was gonna order something, I love when people do this. I was gonna order something and he said, no, 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 no. You've gotta try the barbecue chicken steak sandwich, it is unbelievable. So, I did and he was right, it was unbelievable and I'm probably gonna grab one on my way home at Butter Bings on Hampshire Street.
This party knows its food, trust me. I'm not gonna lead you wrong.
I'm always gonna take your recommendation after that one. Climate Designs Systems, if you have any, any needs for plumbing, heating, HVAC, climate design systems, they're not just gonna be sponsoring this debate, they're sponsoring all of the debates. They love what we're doing here and we are happy to have them on board. Dawn's Sign Tech in North Andover, if you have a business and you need to sign for your business, she is an expert, she's been doing it for decades. And if you drive up and down Main Street in North Andover and you look at all of those new businesses, every single one of those signs were done by Dawn Sign Tech. You'll be pretty impressed when you drive down Main Street, North Andover. And Marku Towing, so if your car breaks down, call Marku Towing. If you've got a truck, an SUV, call Marku Towing, they will take care of you. We're so glad to have them on board. I could spend like five more minutes doing an introduction, but I noticed when we watched the podcast afterwards, we were losing people because the introduction was too long. So, I'm gonna give each candidate an opportunity to introduce themselves and then we'll get right into the media stuff. And why don't we start with, we'll start in the middle and then we'll go that way.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you to our sponsors and the people that are here today. My name is Joel Ferretta and I'm running for central district city council. My first time being involved in city politics. Like a lot of people in Methuen, we've been watching city council meetings, school committee meetings over the last few years and just being frustrated by the process. I decided to run, hopefully be able to bring a sense of, you know, common sense back to, back to the city council, being able to work with everybody, not just the select few who are behind the scenes, who feel like they should be able to call those shots. A lot of the stuff you're gonna hear tonight is gonna, we're gonna bring up the police contract, they're gonna bring up the school committee and the issues there. There are many more issues than those too. I think it's a citywide issue right now when it comes to our city budget. We have a spending problem and I think we need to be able to go through every department and figure out those issues. And I'm hoping that I can earn your vote on November 5th.
Joyce?
Yes, my name is Joyce Campanion and I'm running for reelection for the central district council. I have served as a city councillor for several years and I'm proud of my accomplishments.
You gotta pull your mic up there, Joyce. There you go.
How's that?
Very good. You left it how proud you are of your accomplishments.
I am very proud of my accomplishments for the city of Methuen. I've always listened to the people and tried to deliver what they want and what they expect. I do not have any conflicts. I can vote on every issue that comes in front of the city council and I'm proud of my voting record. So, with that, I'm asking for your vote, one of your votes on November 5th. I'm number two on the ballot. Don't listen to Mr. Duggan, because he had me down for number one and I thank him for that too. So, number two on the ballot and I would appreciate one of your two votes. And I pledge to you my honesty and respect for each and every one of you that live in our town. I represent you and you only. I have no special interest groups. Thank you.
Excellent. And DJ Deeb?
Thank you, Tom. First of all, thank you for hosting this tonight and thank you to all the sponsors for making it possible and thank you to all of the listeners in the audience, as well as the listeners at home on the, on the podcast. My name is DJ Deeb and I'm a candidate for central district city council. I'm asking for one of your two votes on the general election or in the general election on Tuesday, November 5th. I have made it a central theme of my campaign that I have no conflicts. And by that, I mean I have no relatives working for the city and I can vote on all contracts. I will oppose sweetheart deal contracts like the ones given to the police superiors and the police chief. It is time for an independent outside audit of the police department budget and police department spending to find out what's really happening there. Also, Methuen has a spending problem, not a revenue problem. Three years ago, I called for a hiring freeze in the city and I repeat that call today. Unfortunately, 50 new positions have been added in the city in the last two years. It's time to halt these new positions. It's time to end wasteful spending and wasteful contracts. If elected, I will put the taxpayers first. Please visit djdeeb.com for more information and please vote for DJ Deeb on Tuesday, November 5th.
Alright, thank you, I'm sorry, thank you very much, I appreciate all three of you guys doing that. The rules are, for those who are just tuning in, we have no rules. It's not like MCTV where they say you can't attack each other. We want you to attack each other if you want. If you've got something to say or you have a question for one of your opponents, please do that. At some point, I will give you guys all an opportunity for that. There's no time limit on any of these answers, just please be respectful of the time because we only have an hour. If we have to go over a few minutes, that's fine, because we have enough advertisers and sponsors that we can cover the extra time if that happens. My first question, since we all know what the other questions are gonna be, I want to start with something new. Steve Saber's brother is looking to bring a marijuana facility to Methuen. There's been an awful lot of talk about bringing a marijuana growing facility to Methuen. It's a very, very controversial thing. When North Andover did it and I went to town meeting, I actually voted against making marijuana legal, but now that it's legal, it's kinda hard to say, you know, like alcohol's legal and if you're against alcohol being legal, it's kinda hard to say, yeah, but now that it's legal, I don't want a liquor store in my neighborhood. So, I'm gonna ask each of you and you guys can talk to each other, you can agree and disagree with each other if you want. What it is, what you think about Methuen having a marijuana growing facility? What you think that's going to do for the neighborhoods, good or bad? And what you think it's going to do for the expenses of the city, good or bad? And whoever wants to go first, I'll throw that out for you.
I'll be happy to start, Tom. I absolutely support that facility. I think it's a shame that the city council has put obstacles in place to prevent marijuana companies from coming into the city, which they've tried to do in the past. Neighboring cities, Haverhill and Lowell, are already generating tens of thousands, now hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue for their respective cities by having these. The fact is, marijuana is here to stay. As you pointed out, Tom, it's legal, it's not going anywhere and we need to decide, do we wanna, do we wanna take any of the benefits from that? And I think the city can benefit from all of the businesses that it can get at this point. And if they wanna come in and they wanna put a marijuana facility, I'm all in favor. I think we'd be doing a major disservice by rejecting it, which is what the current city council has done. They've put obstacles in place.
So, I know the, I know the current city council is now working on it, they had the cannabis committee and now we're getting ready to go for a joint hearing. I, I agree with a, a grow facility at this point would be a first step. I think until there's more data, because Methuen did vote it down when it was on the state ballot a couple of years ago. And now that, now we have that obstacle, that obstacle in place where we can't just, you know, we have to go to the city council and there has to be, you know, things done in order to start a retail or a medical, medical licenses. But I think what people, I think a lot of people get it that just because you don't sell it in Methuen doesn't mean it's not in Methuen. You know, if you, I've been, you know, if you're out, you know, walking the neighborhoods like I've been doing or holding signs, that's all you smell. So, if we feel by just saying, we're not selling pot in Methuen and the problem goes away, it's not going away. So, I think the first step would be is looking at a grow facility where now you don't have a storefront. It's, you know, it's grown, it's trucked out and I think it needs to be zoned properly. So, that way it's not, you know, you're not having issues where it's near a residential neighborhood. It's far enough away where it doesn't impact that. But I think there's places in Methuen that would be able to house a gross facility without, you know, disrupting neighborhoods.
Joyce?
Yes, well, I think it's something that we need to ask the citizens what they would want. I know a lot of people use it as a medical issue and as, you know, they need it a lot. And, but, you know, like to do new developments and that, we go to the people and ask them what they would like in the area and what they wouldn't like. I think we need to get a specific place that is not impacting any one neighborhood, but would be accessible to everyone that's in need of it.
Right, I think.
And I think it's, we need to have pretty set rules and regulations and it's something that shouldn't happen just overnight, but it needs to be worked on together.
I think what, what needs to happen is, I think everybody just sees, if you're against it, you're just flat out against it. And I was at the city council meeting a couple of weeks ago when you guys had the discussion and then decided to move it to a joint public hearing. Everyone just gonna assume it's going in my neighborhood, they've, you know, walking neighborhoods. People, there was a survey out and how would you feel if it was on Lowell Street? You know what, that's my neighborhood. If you wanna put, you know, eventually we get to that point, you wanna put one in that empty fish store that's been there for about four years and maybe bring some more revenue in, great. But when we get to that point, we're still, we gotta, you know, you gotta crawl before you can walk or if we can run. And right now, people are just trying to jump out of the gate and figure this is where we're gonna go. No, we need to have the joint hearing, we need to discuss it, we need to see what the plans are, where, you know, where the people are looking to put these facilities.
And we need input from the people, the citizens.
Absolutely, and that's where those joint.
I think just to add, we have, we have zoning laws, we have commercial zoning, we have residential zoning and obviously it would go into a commercial zoning area. But at the same time, we need, we need to get away from the, and I think you just said this, Joel, the not in my backyard mentality, because it's already in our backyard. But as long as it's in an area that's commercially zoned and we have plenty of areas in Methuen, industrial parks where it could go in as well. I mean, those are certainly issues that could be ironed out. I mean, that's why we have commercial versus residential zoning. But I, I think we need to, we need to welcome that business if, if we can bring it in.
And I, we need to welcome the people to come in on the conversation and voice their opinion too. I mean, I think we're all saying the same thing.
Absolutely, and that's why, exactly, I think we're all in agreeance that whichever steps we go, whether it's, whether it's recreational, medical or just grow facility, that we need to make sure the process is pure, that it's, that there's no issues. You know, I know you mentioned Steve's brother. Like, we need to make sure that throughout this whole process, that it's on the up and up, because there's been so many other issues that come across that all of a sudden you find out down the road where something happened behind closed doors and we don't know about it. Now, all of a sudden, it comes out after it's approved. I think by having the joint public hearings and making sure every step is as transparent as it can be, you know, will allow, will allow the citizens, whichever way it goes, to actually feel like their voices were heard and that the process worked for them.
What do you guys think about, oh, guys, Joyce?
Yeah, it's just the liability also, I wouldn't want to see it on the back of the community.
Liability? Well, that was my next question, because if you have this kind of facility, you're gonna need additional police protection. You're gonna have, you know, you're gonna have, you know, there are gonna be expenses to the town. And so, how would you guys, if that were to come in, you guys are gonna have to work on some kind of a contract with whatever company comes in, how would you work that?
So, I know if you've been, if you've been to any of the other facilities, I've been to the one in Lowell.
You didn't bring me?
Sorry.
See how you are?
So, you know, I think there's a lot of misconceptions when it comes to these facilities. You know, you stand outside, they check your ID, you get into a vestibule, you check your ID again. There's a third ID check and there's also a private security firm on hand who's doing all of this. So, I think that's obviously a discussion that happens once, once everything's approved and obviously it's gonna, you know, there's all those processes where you're bringing Methuen police and I'm sure, you know, all the other public departments are gonna have an input on what they feel they need to do. But that's where, reaching out to these other communities that have been through the process and having them be part of it with us to say, alright, this is what worked when we did it, this is what didn't work. Instead of us just feeling like as a town or a city, yeah, we know what's best and this is how we're gonna do it. So, I think there needs to be that outreach from, whether it's the mayor's department or the city council or whoever's, you know, Board of Health, whoever's involved in that. We need to make sure we're reaching out to these other towns and cities that have been through this process. We don't have to recreate the wheel, you know, make, let, let what they've done learn from that, things that worked, things that didn't, and let's get it right.
So, I guess my final thought on this is each city and town got a chance to vote on it when Massachusetts decided to make marijuana illegal or put it on the ballot to see if it would be illegal. And Methuen voted no. And so, now I hear.
It was a close vote.
Well, but they still voted no.
Right.
And so, I, I now have a lot of people saying to me during political discussions, you know, at coffee shops and stuff, hey, listen, the people have voted, why are these guys even having this conversation? We don't want this in Methuen.
So, I think, I think what's tough with that is it was a state referendum, you know, so the city, I mean, the state opened that can of worms by putting that verbiage in there saying, well, it's a state referendum, it's gonna be legal statewide or not. Then, but we put that stipulation there, well, if you vote no, then there's gonna be these, these things you can do. I think, I think that's tough, I think it's either a state law or it's not a state law. You know, I know other, you know, there are towns that, that went, you know, when it comes to the legal license, you mentioned that earlier, there were towns that are dry. But I think, you know, they're not, they're not gonna sit, those towns that are dry aren't gonna say, well, alcohol never comes in, into Wellesley, because we're a dry town.
Right.
You know, so they've made that choice, you know, they have the, they also have the ability to recoup those losses by, you know, their tax rates and, you know, the price of property is down in those towns. But I, if it's, if it's legal, it's legal. And I feel like that, you know, it's the state, it's the state law and we need to abide by the state law. I think if you start cherry picking which laws you wanna go by and which you don't, I think that makes it very difficult.
I think that's a very important point, because the most dangerous drug out there, certainly alcohol, and it's everywhere and it's completely legal. I, I don't believe that the war on drugs has worked and I, I think that, you know, the fact that the state voted for it, we're only hurting ourselves if we don't enter into 2019 and soon 2020 and say, hey, look, here's an opportunity to generate some revenue here. We're gonna deal with, unfortunately, no matter what happens, we're gonna deal with some of the negatives. We're gonna deal with some of the problems. As Joel talked about early, walked down Lowell Street, I'm just down the street from him, you can smell it everywhere. People are gonna do it no matter what.
And you don't call me. Like, I don't get this at all. You guys are supposed to be my friends. Any other thoughts, Joyce?
I can't stand it, to be honest with you, but, I mean, people are doing it, they choose to do it.
And some people need it for, like I said, medical reasons and so be it. But I think there's, you know, we have to walk, a crawl before we start to walk or run. So, I think it's something that needs to be on the table and the people need to have their input in it. So, and strict laws have to be enforced, just like the alcohol in that and.
And just so that people at home understand, we're not talking about a store where people can go buy marijuana. We're talking about just a grow, simply a growing facility like they wanted to do in North Andover. My next question, a lot of, a lot has been made about the police contract. You guys are free to work that into your answer if you want. I think it's kinda been talked to death, but I'm more than happy to have more discussion on it. But let me ask you this, what would happen if we were to find out maybe an hour after tonight's debate that there's another union in Methuen that did the exact same thing as the superior officers? When they put their contract through, it was really not zero to and two, they stacked in all of their benefits? How would you guys handle that? Because if you're gonna be on the city council, this is something you're gonna have to deal with.
So, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be shocked. Like, I feel like the reason the police contract got so much play is because of the numbers that were associated with it. You know, I think we've even seen it, so even more recently, so we got into all these issues. We brought in, we had to bring in, you know, we borrowed the $4 million, we bring in the CAFO. So, we, you know, a position now that's making $170,000 a year. And then all of a sudden, in July and August, the reports still aren't coming out. You know, we had a meeting September 17th where there were promotions from the fire department, still no financial impact statements, along with those promotions, where, where the chief is on, on the stand doing math, trying to justify, you know, and I, I agreed with what Jess was saying on the floor that night, you know, trying to make sure that this was, this was a net loss. It was, you know, the way she went about it and the verbiage, it just, that may not have agreed with much, but that's the right idea. And you, everything that we've been through for the last two years comes back to the city council not having the information needed in front of them in order to make educated decisions. And as much as the spotlight's there now, I'm still not seeing as much of what I feel like the, the city council should have in front of them.
I was a little surprised, I was a little surprised by that, because for the last six months, everybody's been talking about how we have to get financial impact statements and verify everything, because we had a department head, the superintendent, standing in front of the city council and lie, just outright lie. And so, now here we are months later and the fire chief got up and it's no, it's no, it's no knock at Timmy Sheehy, he's a good guy and he's probably telling the truth. But they set a policy that they have before they take a vote on expenditure, that they have a financial impact statement and they didn't. And when, like you said, when Jess brought it up, they poo-pooed. I think, I honestly think if Jess, Jess proposed saving babies from burning buildings, they'd all vote no. Right, because of, because of who was saying it. But I'm, I'm really surprised that this council made this policy because of what went on and then the first chance they got, they threw it out the window.
Well, just, just to add to this, Tom, the fact is, what Joel said is right as well. You need to have the impact statement. Why the financial impact statements were not provided is, is an issue. And what bothers me is with these contracts is that the person responsible, the person who had an obligation, was, was never held to account by the city council. I mean, the auditor was allowed to retire out into the wind and there was no accountability. He wasn't forced to reveal the names of who he talked to. And for months, this thing dragged on, they kept asking, who did you tell, who did you tell? Obviously, people were asleep at the switch here and it wouldn't surprise me either if there were more contracts like this. And this is what has to stop. And one of the things you asked, what would you do about it on the council?
Right, that's the main question.
I'll tell you what I'll do about it. I will not vote for a budget that allows for these positions. The city council holds the purse strings, they control the budget and I will not vote, I pledge right now, I will not vote for a budget to fund five captains regardless in the police department. And I certainly won't vote for a budget with these types of contracts.
But I think, for the, for those, for those who are listening on the audio, because people can download the audio on Podbean and Speaker, I'll just say your name as you're speaking so everybody, nobody gets confused as to who's speaking.
Joel Ferretta, real quick, Joyce, and then I'll, I'll let you speak, I'm sorry. But I think as a city councillor, the citizens are putting their trust in you. And if, if every contract in front of me is supposed to have a financial impact statement and you're supposed to know it and then when the vote comes and I don't have that, I can't vote. It's, it's simple, you need to have everything in front of you before you cast that vote. And if I do cast the vote and I don't have those facts, then I'm not doing my job. So, I should be held accountable for that. But I think right now, especially with everything that's went on the last two plus years, that city council should not be holding a vote unless they have all the information in front of them that, and they, and they feel that the information is accurate. You know, when the, with the whole police thing, people said they read it and they weren't sure and now they're like, then you, then don't vote yes.
Right.
Either vote, you know, vote present, vote no, but then don't vote yes if you're unsure.
Joyce, I'm gonna give you as much time as you want, but you were on the city council when Jess made that proposal and she said, with Tim Sheehy sitting here, look, we have a policy to not vote for anything unless we get a financial impact statement. We don't have one, I'm voting, you, you supported it.
And he said he would get it to us. So, you take him at his word and I see you shaking your head, DJ, but, you know, let's face it, what happened on the school side, I didn't see you stand up.
You were there, Joyce, we'll get to that.
No, honey, I was not there when Judy Scannell got let go.
Oh, so you, so you knew about everything that was going on, she was honest with you about the budget?
I didn't say that.
We got rid of Judy within 48 hours and the open meeting law allowed us to. You allowed Tom Kelly to stay there and there was no accountability, there was no accountability.
Where did you spend the $4 million that we had to go borrow?
You, you allowed, you allowed him.
We borrowed four and now, right? Maybe we, and then Jess was on the floor asking to borrow more and you guys all told her no. So, now what happens if, what happens if this thing comes to arbitration in December?
The stability officer told us not to, okay? So, you're paying that man big bucks to tell us what we should do and, and putting us in the right direction and we're gonna throw his thoughts out the window.
So, now, but here's, so we haven't banked money, so now you guys filed with the ethics, you know, you guys filed your ethics report on September 17th, you know, your version of what you guys feel happened. The superiors did that. So, you know, I think what people understand is your version and what was filed, none of that is proven fact. Those are, that's your, that's the council's version.
You can get the video of the meeting and watch it and you can see step by step what happened at that meeting.
Right, but just because.
Any citizen is, is able to get that video and watch the meeting and you'll see it just for yourself and the honesty.
And then when the ethics committee comes forward with their report, then I'll take that as, as final word. But when, when, when we had to borrow four.
And I didn't see anyone who was at the podium either, objecting to it when we were voting.
I sent a letter to the entire city council.
Were you there when the school committee came before us?
I was out of town, but I sent a letter to the town.
DJ, please.
So, Joyce, we borrowed the four.
I can produce it.
I don't care what you can produce.
And I can also produce the inspector general's report saying that you violated your own rules in the city charter and approving the contracts that you did. It's on the inspector general's website.
I didn't approve the contract, I was not on the council.
Alright, so here's.
But you approved the other contracts.
So, here's my question, Joyce.
And without the impact statement in front of you, without the impact statement.
A lot of love in this room.
So, Joyce, here, here's the question.
Oh, well, listen, you wanna throw, not you, you wanna throw stones and we had to ask the citizens to, to tell the citizens we're going out for $4 million, because the school department overspent, no one bothered to check those, when you get your warrants at your meetings.
And Joyce, you addressed why that happened at the last debate. Would you like to tell us where the, where the money went? It went to mandates for special education.
That was one of them, let's not blame the special ed kids for all that, it was misspending.
We're not blaming them, we have, we have a legal obligation and they had to take care. And Judy Scannell was also.
You should have budgeted your money better.
Judy Scannell was also on tape saying that they would have to come back for additional revenue if the population of the schools increased, which it did. And that's, and I voted against the budget at the time because I felt it was insufficient.
I can't even say the names because they're yelling at each other so good.
But that's, that's exactly what happened, you know it.
So, so let's go back to, let's go back to.
You were on the school committee at the time.
Guys, hold on a second. No, I was not.
You were on the school committee when that budget was cut, when that fiscal year budget 2018.
I was on the council when you came before us.
No, when, when we were planning the budget for that following year, you weren't on the council yet, you were on the school.
And I was going on to the council, it was not approved while I was there.
But you were, you were there for the planning of it and you heard the same things we did.
That's right, but I wasn't there to vote on it.
About the budget being insufficient.
So, I think both, I think you guys go back and forth on the school department stuff all day.
That'd be great.
You, in the end, you both voted at some point to continue to have Judy Scannell as a superintendent when she didn't have her licensure. You can say, well, I only, I did extensions.
Well, at some point, he's got you on that, I can't disagree with that even a little bit.
Oh, wait a minute though, she was there before we got on.
But you gave her, right before, but she was extended.
And as soon as we found out, we acted within 48 hours according to the open meeting law to get rid of her.
That's right, as soon as they found out, they made the moves to get rid of her. I don't know what TV you were watching, but you, you better tune, tune in, honey, tune in.
She was hired in 2011 on a waiver.
And I wasn't even living in Methuen at the time.
That's right, he wasn't.
Let's rip it down a little bit, go ahead, Joel.
She was hired in 2011 on a waiver, knowing that she needed, she had a year.
By Phil Littlefield, yes.
But then subsequent school committees continued to offer her contract extensions without making sure she fulfilled what she needed to do in the waiver.
That's not what happened.
No.
How does she, how was she superintendent for eight years?
There was one contract extension, when I got on the board.
Right, and did you know what was in that contract?
No, that was done by, I knew the salaries and benefits were, I read it, I read it. But we're not the custodians of licensure, we didn't have the licensure information, that's personnel, exactly.
Did I just hear that right? I wanna make sure the people at home heard that right. She asked you if you read the, if you knew what was in the contract, you said no?
I read the contract, no, I knew it was in the contract, I didn't know about the licensure, because that wasn't part of it.
That's right. That's right.
I had a copy of the contract, obviously.
But you didn't have a copy of her license.
What I was saying, but I didn't have a copy of her license. And according to master general laws, that's not our responsibility, except when we're hiring someone.
Actually, just out of full disclosure, I spoke with the head of the Department of Education, Jeff Riley, who's a very good friend of the show, who was actually on the show and I asked him that question six months ago. I said, is the Department of Ed doing an investigation? Why didn't the Department of Ed put a stop to this? And his answer was, it's up to the local school committees, we don't interfere. So we can, we can say it's the state, but the state says it's you.
The state allowed it continuously. They didn't have their public portal till just a couple of years ago. So you didn't have access to that information like now you have access to everybody's records, which is, which is a great thing. But we didn't have that, they're passing the buck. They, we, we were audited every year by the Department of Education. They didn't catch anything.
Okay, so back to when, before we got completely sidetracked.
Joel Ferretta.
We, thank you. We borrowed the $4 million. So now you guys filed with the ethics board, the superiors filed their report. You, there's also an arbitration setup now which got pushed back. I don't know, it got pushed back to December 17th, past the election, whatever.
But that's not our doing, Joel.
No, okay, so, but what happens now at that arbitration hearing? If all of a sudden it's found that the superiors were correct and now we owe damages, we owe back pay? We still don't have money.
There's no money in the budget.
I'm, I'm going to vote to cut the budget in the police department. And we're going to cut those positions. I'm going to, I, I won't vote for a budget to fund those positions anyway, no matter what happens.
But DJ, you can't cut the budget in January. Right, so now all of a sudden, all, if, if the report comes back in December that we're at fault, you can sit here and say, I'm going to cut the budget. You can't already, you, we've already, that's been found now if we owe money.
Oh, you can, you can make a, you can make immediate cuts if you have to.
But how does cut it, you know, how does cut the budget?
We have to get the votes to open up the budget to be owed.
Right, which is what I'd propose. Now it's up to the majority to support that, but that would be what I would support.
Your one vote, easier said than done, honey.
I have no problem doing it.
So DJ, you cut.
You don't, and I'm sure others don't, I'm sorry, Tom.
And maybe we ought to stop all these, these ridiculous monthly trips to Las Vegas and Reno and San Francisco that the chief of police has been taking, spending tens of thousands of dollars a month, wasting our money.
And is anyone from the school department going?
No, they're not going to these out of state conferences.
But they used to go to the conventions, DJ.
Yeah, the state conventions, they go down, they, they go to Hyannis, they go to Boston, no they don't.
Oh, they did before.
Well, they haven't since I've been there.
Okay.
But I'll tell you, these out of state conferences have to end and that's one area we'd cut right away.
I'm pretty sure that the out of state conferences are paid for by, by grants, is that not correct?
Not always, not always, no.
But I think that's.
I have the receipts, I have all the receipts, I asked for all that.
But that's where.
If only you had done that on the school committee, we'd be in much better shape, right?
But Joel Ferretta here.
I did, I voted against every school department budget.
So, Joel Ferretta here, so if what DJ is stating is fact, that's where these audits need to come in. I think we need to start opening up the books on every department and figure out where the waste is and trim that. Because right now, every department is top heavy. You know, you, you know, you bring up the DPW, people bring up the DPW, you know, they've got a building without a roof. But the, the feet on the ground, there's nobody there. So you need to look in that department and find out where the waste is. I, in, a lot of it is overtime. It's, you're understaffed.
Yeah, because they're away at conferences, so you have to pay for overtime.
No, I'm talking about, we're talking about DPW.
Well, police too.
But there's, there's a lot of waste in the city that people really don't understand and you see it. I saw it as, as a member of the MAIC and as the president of a youth group, I see it every day. So we have a stadium that was built, a $4.6 million complex, it's the best around this area. What we've done is, we had two gentlemen that were there, one retired. So they both work Monday to Friday, seven to three. So instead of, when people proposed, well, when you hire another spot, don't make it a seven to three. Make it a 12 to eight, maybe Tuesday to Saturday. So now you're, now that, now that facility is staffed when it's actually being used. And nope, we hired another seven to three guy. So what we do is, anytime that stadium's being used, we're paying a DPW person overtime to sit there and babysit these groups. The, the facility is overseen by the DPW, is scheduled by the rec department, is mainly used by the school department. Like that's Methuen in a nutshell, there's so many different finger pointers and everything that goes on, it's hard to get an answer. Then you have that facility where it was in, when it was voted on, part of to pay off the bond was signage. It is now, six years later, there is not one sign there. And every time, if you ask Bill Buckley, who you guys gave him a three-year extension, you know, oh yeah, that's coming. You know, so everyone in this community, community feels that economic development is one of the biggest things that we need to see going forward. And then we just renewed our, our lead for three years and not giving the new council or mayor the opportunity to be able to find somebody that they feel that can get the city going back in the right direction. So I'd like to, Joyce, I'd like you to explain why you guys decided to vote a three, to give him a three-year extension.
Well, because he is bringing in businesses. Um, and the sports facility is great and I support it 110%. But, um, you know, you're saying this about the signs and stuff. Has someone, have you come before the council and brought that idea up?
So in 2015, I sat in a room with the consultant that the mayor brought in at that time. Spent $35,000 on a consulting firm.
Another consultant.
Yep, you know, like, like, you know, instead of using the $50,000 we had left, we, we spent it for a consultant for him to draw up sidewalks on Riverside Drive.
I mean, don't blame the council if, if it didn't come to us.
No, so, but what I'm, I'm, but you, you then, all right, it didn't get to you because what happened was that consultant who just pretty much took $35,000 from Methuen and then left, went, came to the MAIC and said, here's a list of a bunch of people that have a bunch of money in Methuen. And we're like, oh, that's great. All right, so what, all right, we get signage, here's, this is how much this sign will cost, boom, 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 all the way down to naming a clubhouse.
No one saw it through?
So then, no. So then what happened was.
I know, but you people, and you people worked so hard for that organization. Why didn't anyone come before us and bring it to our attention? I don't even know if I was on, at 2:15, I wasn't on there.
So at, so at, every time that it's brought up in a, in a meeting with, you know, it's, oh yeah, we're working on it, we're working on it. But then when, when that first meeting happened with the consultant, we were like, all right, well, where's the money going to go? What's going to go straight to the bond? Well, what about upkeep of the facility? What about putting some of that aside? Nope, straight for the bond. And then we're like, all right then, you guys have a blast.
And you can't blame the whole council for that if we're not in on there. I mean, coming on to the council, they're not telling me about the sports facility.
No, but, but it's, it comes under the economic development and.
Right, but what I'm saying is, people should.
You were on, you were on the committee, you were on the city council when that vote happened.
When was this? You said 2:15, I wasn't there.
When you voted on the approval of Nicholson Stadium, you were one of the votes that approved it and you knew the seven steps.
For the, uh, for the field.
Yes.
For the field.
Right.
For the complex, I went against, but some of it.
You vote.
The naming of it, I'm sorry.
Right, but you were on the council that voted to approve the project.
Yes, but when you don't oversee it, that's just like when you're having a house built. It's your house, you're having it built and you can sit there 24/7, but it's the builder that's going to use the wood to the nails or whatever, you have to sit there 24/7 and watch and make sure that he's doing it.
Right, so in, in, in the city, and it hasn't happened because.
And you parents, and you do a heck of a job, let me tell you. If you knew this was going on, how come no one came in front of the council and complained? That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, Joel.
A simple, a simple question. Why didn't anyone come and say something?
Because we're.
Our viewership is through the roof.
As a volunteer, we are all the time pretty much just had the door slammed in our face when we come up with ideas and willing.
Never happened when I was there, slam the door in your face. You people do a hell of a job. My kids all played the sports and all, I would never close the door. I was always there to support the sports. My thing is, you don't give up, you come before us and you complain, complain, I almost said, I'm sorry.
No.
Something else, you don't.
You can say again, you can say, come up bitch, do whatever you want to say, you can say it.
Don't come after the fact like you're telling us tonight. Where the hell have you been all the other days?
I've been on that field.
Give him a chance.
I've been volunteering my time to make sure those kids get to use it.
You should come before us.
DJ's just happy he's not getting yelled at.
And be, and voice your opinion.
DJ, I'm going to give you, let's give Joel a chance to answer.
I'm going to give you a chance to answer, I'm going to answer it with something that it's kind of, it sums up what's been going on. So the city council passed an ordinance with seven bullet points how that would be paid for. And there was very little, if none, none follow through by the council to make sure that was done. Something similar just.
The council that would pay would be the mayor's office.
Something similar just came up to the, to the city council recently. When it came for the, when this CAFO came to this, to the city council, asking for the 1.05 million for the, for the software update.
Yeah.
And the money was proposed to come out of the grant that was there for city hall. The money had been there for over two years, sitting there with no renovations. And now all of a sudden, we're coming two plus years later and now we're like, oh, this building is beautiful, we need to put the money into the building. Why wasn't anyone making sure the money was put into the building when the money came in?
That's right.
And all we did is then we, you know, once all like, oh yeah, we used it for the elevator, we should probably do something with that money. And then, and then when all of a sudden, when somebody comes up, well, we could really use this. And now the argument is, well, we need to fix the windows. Well, the window should have been fixed when that money came in and there should have, once that grant was accepted, there should have been things in place to make sure that the issues were addressed right away, not two plus years after.
That's up to the council, that's up to your, your sitting mayor. Has that money there, knows what has to be done and has a blind eye for it, so.
We have to move on, but I, I, we gotta give DJ some, some time and then there's something he said that I want to ask about.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going to add that this goes to show the importance also of having a reserve account in the city for, for emergencies and upkeep. And this, the city needs to be more forward in its planning and, and they depleted the reserve account because, uh, the, the police department was buying luxury Chevy Tahos for the superior officers and.
You don't like the police too much, do you?
No, no, my father was a police officer. I love the police, but I like the patrolmen who are out there doing, doing a very good job. And the patrolmen in Methuen are second to none, they're doing excellent job. But I don't think we need so many superior officers. I think we need more patrolmen on the streets. That's, that's how I feel. I also don't feel that we need to have luxury Chevy Tahos, uh, that, that people are driving around. What's, what's the matter with the Ford Escapes, uh, or even Ford Explorers, which are much less money? So what happened was that year, the reserve account was depleted. And we need to, we need to put more money back into that reserve account. We need forward planning. So when things like this come up, we have, uh, we have money that we can use to, to make these types of internal improvement. And, and that means that we can't spend every, every penny that comes in, we have to save. We, we, we have to, we have to plan for the future. And we're not doing that in Methuen. We need a master plan. We, we, we really need to sit down and, and come up with that type of a plan. And part of it is, we, it's, it's hard to attract talent, whether it's, uh, people with the right backgrounds to the city council or for mayor, because the, the job just doesn't pay. And you don't attract the type of talent you need for that type of a plan.
One more minute on this because we gotta.
Like you mentioned the plan, it has to be a buy-in for everybody because I remember Lynn Vidler in the past has been hopped on it for a while, just trying to get a list of actual vehicles that were owned by the city to inventory it. And we couldn't get that. So I think you, it starts from the top down and making sure that every department is held accountable.
That's what I said, yeah.
If the city council wants that, then they're making, and then making sure that information, it starts, it, it needs to be a cohesive unit. And right now, this, it splinters everywhere.
I want to thank Butter Bings, who has amazing pizza, by the way. I'm, I'm, I'm not really much of a pizza guy because I've eaten so much pizza in my life as a, as a single guy. I'm almost kind of sick of pizza. But, uh, I, I actually like the pizza at Butter Bings. Uh, it's excellent, so if you get a chance, go get some, uh, some pizza. And what was the other thing that you said that they have that's really good?
So they have the white buffalo chicken pizza.
White buffalo chicken pizza, you might want to try. Joel Ferretta is very good at recommending food, I'll tell you that right now.
This was no accident, Tom. I worked hard for this.
I also want to thank, uh, Climate Design Systems, if you have an HVAC problem, you need air conditioning, heating, plumbing, they will take care of you. Also want to thank Makku Towing, who's a sponsor of the debate. Uh, if your car breaks down or you got to get it over to a mechanic, uh, make sure you call Jason Makku. He's a good guy and he loves the show and he's sponsoring us. And Dawn Sign Tech, uh, if you need a sign for your business, Dawn Sign Tech will, uh, will take care of you. Take a drive up Main Street, north end of, she's done every single sign on Main Street and she did a great job. DJ, you said something during that last discussion and I want to just kind of come back to a little bit, um, that you're going to cut the police. And you know, as much as everybody else, when you say, I don't want to cut the patrolmen, I want to cut the superior officers. But you know that the, the way that the, the, the way that that works. If you cut two captains, those captains don't get laid off, they get bumped, they get bumped down.
No, I understand that.
And then a certain number of lieutenants get bumped down and then you have a certain number of patrolmen get laid off. So what you're talking about is laying off patrolmen. I want you to always justify that and then I want the rest to talk about whether they agree with that.
Sure, not necessarily, Tom. And I realize they get bumped down, but they would, they would, like you said, get bumped down to patrolmen. I think we could, we could use more patrolmen on the streets and I'm okay with that, would be saving money on the top. Uh, if we bumped them down, we wouldn't be paying the salaries of, uh, some of the superior officers. So, uh, you know, that's what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not talking about, uh, getting rid of patrolmen. I want to add patrolmen. I think 71 or 72 patrolmen for the city of Methuen is not enough, given the, the issues.
But how do you do that if you're going to cut captains? It's going to, it's going to end up laying off patrolmen.
Because now they're going to be working at a patrolman's salary. I'm saying we could, we could still add patrolmen, would be saving money, not paying the captain's salaries.
I, I think what DJ's saying is where, instead of having 24 superiors and 71 patrolmen, if there's a reorganization done after the audit and the audit proves that that needs to be done, then if you, if you're down from 24 to say 18 superiors, now the money you save, now maybe you have, you have 81 or 82. I think what needs to be done is that audit, see where the money's being used, you know, see where the money's going. And if it's possible where you save money, if you end up reorganizing, you don't need as many superiors, the money you save then goes back into patrolmen or on the street. I don't think anybody.
But the math doesn't work. I mean, if you lay out, if you, if you bump down two captains, that bumps down maybe four or six lieutenants. That then bumps down four or six sergeants and then you have to, and then you've got to lay off.
And then they're going to hit the street.
So Joyce, pull your mic up and then tell us, oh, do you, do you agree with DJ's, uh, uh, position here to just get rid of the cops?
No.
That's not my position.
Okay, well.
My thing is, yes, cut the, the money. I don't want to lose police, but if you're going to start cutting from the top, it trickles down and the, the end guy or girl is, is going to go because they're going to bump one another all the way down. It, it, they, they're under contract and their contract's going to be fulfilled. And you're going to lose police on the end. It's the patrolmen that's going to hit the street.
That's right.
So.
I don't think, I don't think anyone's looking to cut, cut the budget. It's reallocating the budget to make sure that the, the resources are used correctly.
The money, the money out, that you, you are affecting their pay. You are going to lose, they are going to lose money. their pay, you are gonna lose, they are gonna lose money.
There was a reorganization plan put together by, by Council McCarty-
That's right.
And Council Sabre, and that wouldn't, that wouldn't have laid people off, that would've-
Yes, sir, it was gonna trickle down.
That would've bumped people down.
Right, and what do you think's gonna happen to the end guy?
And what about patrolmen?
It was on black and white.
Could've added additional patrolmen.
Now you're gonna add, so if you're gonna bump them, now you're gonna bring them back?
But it obviously depends what we have to work with, with the revenue stream, I don't know what's gonna happen with the arbitration, if they come back and they say a certain thing, then you're gonna make decisions, but-
You know, we could sit here for today till next week, until that arbitration is done.
That'd be great. Our ratings would be-
You know, we could sit here and tell the people whatever they wanna hear, but when it comes down to black and white, and what's gonna be done through the arbitration is gonna be another factor. So, we could sit here all night and say, "I don't wanna get rid of the police, I wanna get rid of the police, it's an arbitration, let's, and then we're gonna have to take it from the arbitrator, and then go forward and, and make it a more, uh, acceptable proposition or proposal." But to sit here and say, "We're not gonna lose police," that's crazy. We're gonna cut, uh, $100,000, we're, so we're, how are we gonna cut it if no one leaves?
Who said cut the budget?
No, if we start laying off, you know, people are gonna hit the street.
A reorganization and cutting are two different things. If, if, if you have a-
No, cause they're gonna go through the bumping system.
Not necessarily, that's what Joel is saying.
I think it is.
That's what you do on the other end, I mean, the fact, the fact remains-
If there's anybody here that knows, I, I mean, seriously, I wish they'd say something, because in a, in a, uh, office of a manufacturer-
You can add patrolmen though, Joyce, I think we agree on that, you can add patrolmen on the other end if you want them, and, and pay less for superior officers.
If they, okay, they're gonna hit the street and bring them back.
There's different ways to do a reorganization, I mean, you know that, there's different ways to do a reorganization.
But when you're dealing with the unions, it would, I just think it's a very touchy-
Yeah, but the city council controls the budget, if they eliminate the positions, then the positions are no longer there.
That's right, and they hit the street.
But the people are still there, if you eliminate the position, and Jim Smith, who's a captain, becomes lieutenant, and Bob Smith, who's a lieutenant, becomes a sergeant, and then Jim Smith, who's a sergeant, becomes a patrolman, and now you've got too many patrolmen to pay. I mean, you get, you, and by the way, most of them are still gonna have, gonna get paid that same amount through the end of that first year. So, I mean, I, I think there's some confusion, and maybe I'm wrong, I mean, it's possible, I, I'm, I'm a human being, but my understanding from living in a police family my whole life, is, once you start bumping those people down-
Right.
You inflate the number of patrolmen that you don't have enough money to pay for, and then you have to start laying people off.
You know, he, here's the thing, you have, the city of Lawrence, which, which you know, Tom, you have 175 patrolmen, you have three captains, and Methuen, you have five captains for 71 patrolmen. It's outrageous, we don't need five captains, and my plan would be-
They also have a deputy, they also have a deputy chief.
To, to eliminate some of those positions, yeah, they're also much larger communities, over 100,000 people there, and, and, and we don't know exactly how many, because not everybody's registered, as you know, we have a lot of illegals there as well.
And they also get a lot of state money and federal funding too, so, it's not, it's not the citizens' enrollments paying the high taxes, you know, to pay for the bills.
As much as I want you guys to keep yelling at each other, cause-
Oh no, we're just talking.
We're having fun.
Um, the, the, much has been made, uh, about candidates for council, supporting or getting support from member, from, uh, mayoral candidates, from other candidates for office, and so I wanna give each of you an opportunity to talk about and tell people, if you have endorsed a candidate or supporting a candidate in another race, if you have accepted support or an endorsement from a candidate in another race, and, and just please do me a favor, because I ju, I really hate the political speak, don't, don't say, "Well, I didn't get an endorsement," when someone's supporting you. What, what, what people need to know at home is, who are you aligned with, and with the other candidates, because some candidates are very open about it, some of them are doing it sneaky behind the scenes, and I think the people need to know who it is, who's supporting you, who you're supporting, and whoever wants to go first.
I'll go first. So, I've met with both mayoral candidates, have discussions, I'm not endorsing one right now, my job is gonna be eventually to work with, hopefully, I get the opportunity to work with whoever gets elected, you know, Jen came to my fundraiser and she, she donated a hundred dollars to my, to my kickoff. So, if that's what you look at, that, that's it, and I've had conversations, and I'm, and I will continue to have conversations with both candidates, in not just the mayoral race, but at-large in other districts. Uh, but, when it comes to myself picking one candidate, I say, "I'm going with this or that," I'm not prepared to do that, and right now, I'll make my choice when it comes to voting, I, I still don't know who I'm gonna cast that vote for yet, now, as these debates and as these things come up, and now, as it gets closer I will, but as a candidate, I'm not gonna be endorsing.
Is there anybody supporting you, any other candidates supporting you?
I, I've, I haven't had anyone come out and say, "Hey, vote for, you know, hey, vote for Joel Ferretta," I've had, you know, I've had conversations with people, like, "Yeah, I hope, wish you the best," but no, you know, I haven't received an endorsement from anybody.
Joyce?
I haven't publicly received any either, and, uh, I've served with, uh, Jen Canaan for, you know, for many years, and, um, I've, uh, you know, supported her for chair and whatever, and I have not met with Mr. Perry yet, and, uh, hopefully we will, and, uh, I don't know him, I just threw the campaign, and, uh, I, I think you have to, uh, you know, weigh issues, and, uh, do I think Jen has the experience and that? Yeah, from city council and stuff, yes, this is Mr. Perry's, you know, first time out, and, uh, everyone's entitled to, uh, a chance, you know, and it's, this is America.
But no, nobody's endorsed you, you haven't supported anybody?
No.
DJ?
No.
Um, well, I, I'm not, uh, I have not been endorsed by either mayoral candidate, and I'm not getting involved with that race, because I'm too busy running my own race. Uh, I got my hands full with that, uh, so, I, I respect both candidates, and I'm willing to work with both of them if I get elected to the council, so, uh, I am not, I am not, uh, receiving this, uh, support as far as I know from, from either one, uh, nor am I endorsing either one. Um, now, having said that, I'm, I'm proud to, uh, to have the support of Jordan Norman Dear, who is, uh, who is supporting me, he was in the primary, uh, campaign, and, uh, I'm proud to have him, uh, with me in this race.
So I think, to follow up on that, Tom, I think both mayoral candidates and other candidates are very open, like, if you have, as a citizen, if you have questions or concerns, don't listen to what myself or anyone else on the stage has to say, and don't let that be your influence. Go to the candidate yourself, talk to them, and make your own choice, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be focused on, "Well, this person's endorsed that person, so I'm voting for that."
Right.
Everyone needs to stop being their own person, do the homework, make that choice for yourself, and don't worry about who's telling you who to vote for.
So, we've got about 10 minutes left, a little bit less than 10 minutes left, um, I wanna give you guys an opportunity to ask each other, or ask another candidate a question, and just try and keep your answers short, you, we're watching the time here, we can go a little bit over, Ed? And our fine producer?
Yeah.
Okay, he's good for that.
Why not?
All right.
It's fun.
So whoever wants, do you wanna ask a question of one of the other candidates, something that maybe hasn't been brought up, or something that you think's been neglected, or maybe just something that you really wanna get out about the other candidate?
Oh, I'll, I'll ask.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll ask Joel, what would you, um, if you were sitting on the council with all this controversy, what would you have done that would be different than, you know, would happen?
So, I guess, are we gonna, we're gonna, are we going back to like the 2017 with, with all of that? I think, I think it's, I think it, it's just a broader picture. It's, I'm being entrusted to do my homework and vote for what the, what the citizens feel is best. If, if the information's not in front of me, I'm not gonna make that choice. That, you know, I need to, we need to hold each, as a council, we need to hold each other accountable, and you need to make sure those that report to the council are also held accountable and making sure the information is correct. So, if I, if something's brought in front of me and the information is not there, or I feel that it doesn't make sense, then I will not proceed, I will, I will not vote, I will not support, I will not support anything that comes in front of the council that doesn't have all the information present to, so we can make that informed decision.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else have a question for a candidate? We, we might actually finish on time tonight. Nobody has a question for another candidate, come on DJ.
Yeah, I have, I have a question for both candidates, I've, I've taken a, a pledge not to support any tax increases, uh, for residents or the residential rate or the commercial rate, which I think both is, both are far too high, especially the, uh, commercial tax rate, which is $28 per thousand, when Salem, New Hampshire here is $20 per thousand, and we're trying to bring in businesses and compete, it makes it difficult, so, will both the candidates here take a, a no new taxes pledge for residential and commercial tax rates?
Absolutely.
Right.
But Joyce, you voted to raise those taxes twice in a row.
Because we had to pay your school bill.
No, that was before, that was before.
So, DJ, I'm gonna follow up your question, so I think we all agree that you can't raise the commercial tax rate.
Body blow.
You, you know, I think-
Okay, we have to pay the loan, DJ.
So, so, everyone agrees that the commercial tax rate is too high and it needs to be lower, that's fine.
Yeah.
But I think by, you know, you keep bringing up the Salem, New Hampshire, well, it's lower. Drive down 28, it's not, it's not, the grass isn't greener here, you can drive by, there's empty storefronts everywhere, so, it's a bigger issue when it comes to storefronts as compared to e-commerce. But I think, DJ, I, your stance is pretty much, I'm gonna, I'll phrase this as my question, Tom, if that's all right.
Sure.
Your stance is, your stance is not spending money on anything, but at some point, you need to invest in order to bring money in. So, the way I, the way I understand yours, the way you've spoke these last couple months is, now if it comes up where we're gonna be able to put 15 parking spots where Shadi's used to be, let's say they put a municipal lot there, but it's gonna cost the city $125,000 to do that in order to bring more parking, I understand from everything that you've said, you're not gonna, you're, you're gonna vote no, and you're not gonna spend that $125,000.
As of right now, that's right, we don't have any money in the reserve account, we need to build up the reserve account, at some point, I agree with you, we, we have to spend money to make money.
But how do you, how do you improve our commercial tax base if we're not gonna make infrastructure, you know, improvements in order to attract those businesses in?
We, we have to look at the commercial tax rate, we need to look at attracting businesses like the one Tom mentioned earlier about the marijuana dispensaries wanting to come in. I mean, we, we, we're putting all kinds of roadblocks in, in place for these types of businesses, we need to remove the regulations, we need to remove the roadblocks, and those are, those are ways to win businesses.
So, all right, so let's, let's remove, let's remove the regulations, let's say the historical society allows somebody to kinda do a little more renovations on the old Ronston Liquor Store that's in, in Hampstead, in Hampshire Street, but now, if you're a business, we've lowered the tax rate to bring you in, but now all of a sudden, you can't bring anything in there, because there's no place for you to park. So, it, there, there's multiple parts, it's, it's not as easy as just say, "We're gonna cut the tax rate, then everybody's gonna come flooding in," we have to make infrastructure and changes in-house in order to attract those as well, and sometimes you have to spend money to make money. You can't just sit back and expect somebody to just hand it to us.
Joel, here's some things, and I, I agree with you, but you have to be smart about it, you have to be smart and you have to be strategic. Here's some things we should've done, we should have a hiring freeze on any and all new positions in the city, that would save money, we should eliminate the longevity and sick time buyback for new employees, we've done that on the school department side in negotiating the contracts on the school department side, the last year and a half, we negotiated those benefits right out of the contracts, we need to do that on the city side, we need to address the retiree health insurance contributions, which are costing the city over a million dollars a year, really, an unfunded liability, um, you, you look at what the current workers are paying in Methuen, the current employees are paying 62% of your, uh, uh, the, the city is paying 62% of the employee healthcare costs, but yet the city is paying 80% of the retiree healthcare costs. We have to cap that, the retirees shouldn't be getting the, a better benefit than the current employees. We need to look at these things, we need to create an ordinance that requires 10 years service, uh, in the city before you can retire with, with the health insurance benefits, uh, because most communities do that, Methuen doesn't, so you can come in and work in Methuen from another community for three years, and retire on Methuen's dime, getting Methuen's, uh, health insurance benefit. Um, s- snow removal hasn't been sent out to bid in over five years, and we haven't looked to see if we can, we can cut expenses there, so there's a lot of areas that the city council has not looked at, uh, to possibly cut expenses, and then do the type of future planning that you're talking about, and build up the reserve account, these are the things we need to be doing.
All right, um, we have, uh, let's do, we have about five minutes left, I wanna thank Butter Bings, um, I also wanna thank, uh, Climate Design Systems, I'm doing this from memory, cause it's not on my screen, uh, Makku Towing, and Dawn's Sign Tech, and we'll give them another free plug at the end of the show, it's not free, actually, they paid for it. Closing statements, this is your chance to, um, once again, tell people who you are, why among all the candidates, including Jim McCarty, who's not here, they should vote for you instead of the other candidates. Everyone has two votes, right, but some people bullet vote, and a bullet vote is when you just vote for that, vote for one, it's like giving somebody two votes, right? Um, so give, give the people at home, like, one last snapshot as to who you are, what your priority is, uh, if you win, uh, what you're gonna do when you hit the ground writing, and whoever wants to go first.
I will, okay.
All right.
I, um, I wanna thank Tom for, uh, hosting this, uh, this evening.
Well, you're welcome.
And, um, also, uh, to the listeners out there and the voters, I've, uh, been, uh, representing you for several years now, and I do much honesty and pride, and your input to these, um, questions and, uh, problems that are facing our community, uh, I want you to know, it, it's, your problem is my problem, and I promise, my pledge to you is, I will, uh, voice your concerns and your, um, ideas, uh, with, to the best of my ability, and I have, and I promise that I will not, uh, be swayed by the, uh, special interest groups. My, uh, pledge is to you, the citizens of Methuen, and the residents of Methuen, uh, that I will do my utmost, uh, best to represent you with honor, honesty, and respect, and that I am open for any, uh, conversation and suggestions. Anytime, you can reach me, uh, on my home phone or through the council office, but your concerns are my concerns, and I pledge to you to, uh, represent you honestly and respectfully. Thank you.
So, thank you, Tom, our sponsors.
Joel Ferretta.
Yeah, and DJ, and Joyce, thank you. It did get pretty heated up here, but in the end, there, you know, you have people that care about this city and are looking to do the right things, we're not gonna agree on how things have went, but ultimately, the reason why all these candidates are here, cause they're looking for what's best for Methuen. So now, what we all need to do as citizens is do our homework, reach out to these candidates and find out who, who, who represents us the best. I'm not afraid to make those tough choices, I don't have those connections where I feel like I need to answer to anybody, where in the past, you can feel like that, when push came to shove, other candidates that are running in this race changed their votes, or decided not to go along with something because of advice they got outside of that, outside of that chamber. So I'm hoping, come November 5th, that everybody can see who the independent candidates are, and that I can earn your vote on November 5th. Any questions? I'm having a, a campaign rally tonight at Ray Rocks on Pelham Street at 7 o'clock, so